So we'll start with any comments from the public regarding items not on the agenda. Does anyone have anything? You do, okay. We know who you are, you're going to just mention who you are for the people who are...
You can sit down though, it's fine. You better record it, yes. If it doesn't work, that's fine too.
My name's Noel Everett, I'm a co-president of the South Burlington Educators Association, and I have just a couple of questions to get some clarification, and then I also just want to kind of confirm some things. So the first one is regarding issues of budgets and when there's a budget overrun, and division of responsibility around who makes choices around that. So, as I'm sure you're all aware, the administrator, the third-party administrator of future planning was unable to fulfill their obligations, and the contract with Datapath was established. And I was wondering, for a point of clarification, if that was, that decision was made by the board or by the administration and business office with David Young, specifically in regards to whether there's budget overrun from new unanticipated expenses.
I'm confused, so you're asking, is it a two-part question? Who made the decision to go with Datapath, and then, and whether there was a budget overrun, or...
Well, we, sorry, I know that Datapath charged more per transaction, so there was additional monies that would need to be spent. And the question is, when that decision is made, or when there are issues that aren't directly in the line items of the budget, who, which board, whether that's an administrative decision, or the board makes the decision?
That's a very good question, and I don't know that I have the answer for you.
Well, one way to address it would be, did this body deliberate on and make a decision to switch from future planning to Datapath? So was there a consultation there? Or was that done by the, by David and the business office? If that helps.
I don't think there was ever a vote on, as a, as a whole body. And, yeah, I would have to go back to my notes about how exactly that decision was made. I mean, I don't have that in front of me right now. There was a lot, there were a lot of moving parts over the summer to try to sort of clean up what had happened with future planning, and, and get us as quickly as possible to a new third-party administrator. But I don't recall there being a vote of the board to do that.
No. I think there was a recognition that administration is not allowed, under executive limitations, to expend funds or make decisions that aren't budgeted. And when this particular situation came to be, it was important that it was communicated, and it was communicated, from my perspective, with the board and, and the administration, including the business office, to come up with, you know, how to move forward. And obviously, that involved Datapath. So, I think, pretty clear that it's, you know, a board slash administrative process that needed to, to, to be in, both needed to be involved.
Okay, that's good to know. And so this is in reference to, at the end of August, Datapath made a communication that's public on the VHI website, that came to South Burlington. And South Burlington decided to pass that communication along to its employees, but decided to omit part of that communication that was from Datapath, to specifically union leaders, as well as the employees of districts. And that rationale that was given to us for that omission was because it referenced possibly unbudgeted funds? Thank you, co-counsel. This is Leland Everett. And so I'm asking if there was a board-level discussion at that point, as far as that choice? And if this board is aware of that choice? I can repeat that again, we've got a little...
No, that's okay.
Go get him, buddy.
Again, the communication was not something that the board deliberated on as a body. I think we were definitely consulted as to whether a communication should go out, and obviously said, yes, a communication should go out. But the details of that was not something that we, that we took a position on as a board.
I think safe to say the board was provided with the information and the rationale for the administrative, administrator's decision around the correspondence that did go out, where it set out specific, what I'll say, perhaps misleading information around what the district would be liable for, and that was an area that we felt was, lacked clarity, and we felt was needed to be, needed to be omitted.
Good. And so, what I would also like to know, and if you need to go back to your notes, and that's fine, I would also like to know how the decisions were made to issue and agree to the terms of the first contract with future planning, as they differ from the terms of the contract that was then made with Datapath, because some of the services and associated fees, et cetera, that were offered from future planning, were no longer going to be offered from Datapath, and as a result, could not be then purchased, which made sense, but it adversely affected the experience of South Burlington employees, and their ability to access and get healthcare. And so, I just would request, that if we don't, if you guys don't know how that decision was made, and what those services are, specifically, the integrated debit card and the direct pay from the third-party administrator to providers, as opposed to direct to employees, which also then is the paragraph that was removed from the memo from Datapath, that they will be offering that service in the future. I would just like to know how this entity, when they decide about how the budget of money is going to be spent, in consultation between the administration and the board, made the first choice that that was going to be part of the deal with future planning? The skin will conglue, but if you can follow me here. Made that first choice, which was in agreement with the understandings at the time, and was provided professional development to the educators of South Burlington about how that would work, and then that dischoice now, that that's not going to be passed along. So I want to know how those choices are being made, board to administratively. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and, yes, and you're getting at, at sort of the delineation of the responsibilities between the board and the administration, and, and how we work together, and what is sort of the board's, the board's responsibility under policy governance versus administrative function, and, and where those lines are drawn. So I understand what you're, what you're getting at.
Cool. Okay. And then the last part is, I just want to confirm with you all that you understand that reimbursement has not happened for many members, that we have members in collection, and that we have people who have been signed up for healthcare who are not receiving anything, they're not even acknowledged as being part of the healthcare, as of their employment start date over the summer for July 1st. And so I just want to make sure that we have confirmation that that's not new knowledge for this board.
We're aware of the challenges? Some, every detail of every challenge? No, we know that there are significant challenges, and that those are still being worked through with Datapath. Are we provided an update on a, on a weekly basis? No, but we understand that there are ongoing challenges, and that Datapath is working to, to sort of clean up what happened with future planning, and, and is also sort of working to expand their services in a, in a very rapid manner, beyond what they were before. So, we are aware that there are challenges, and that's, I guess I can kind of leave it at that for now.
Okay. Just want to make sure. Thank you. Can I say thank you?
You're welcome. Thank you for coming, Leland. Okay, any other comments for items not on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to number four, amendments to the agenda. There's just a small amendment to the agenda, we're going to add just a 12A to discuss the other paper article that I believe is due tomorrow. Am I correct in that? So feedback to Martin on that article, that's due tomorrow. So we'll add that to the agenda.
Put that 12A?
Yeah, that's 12A. And that brings us to number five, announcements and student representative report. So we'll let Arno maybe go first, and then, if David has anything, and then Alex.
So first, just a brief update about the junior rep position. I spoke with Mr. Burke, like I said, in the last two weeks maybe, and we said that he has the application, he'll send that out, and then I can probably post it on some Facebook pages or whatever. Since then, last week, I emailed him asking if there was any progress on that. He hasn't responded to me just yet, but hopefully I'll meet with him soon, so I'll get that taken care of. But then also, I just had like, a quick question about what the next steps after that application are, like, the deadlines and interviews and stuff, like how that kind of worked last year? Or we could talk about this privately as well, it doesn't matter, but...
I don't remember the exact events. I feel like we're a little behind schedule, but I don't have the exact dates in front of me of, of what we had for deadlines and things. I feel like by this time last year, we had already spoken to you, but I could be mistaken in that regard.
I think my first meeting was December 6th, I remember.
Your first actual meeting?
Yeah.
But I think, I remember Elizabeth and I talking to you sometime in the early fall at some point.
Yeah.
I thought, but, but, yeah, we'll have to sort of work on that offline, I think.
Yeah, so I'll definitely touch base with Mr. Burke then. Then for some other news, I also had written down about the NEASC visit. I guess, I mean, Mr. Young has some notes for me here that I can just read.
Sure.
But, so the visitation team, as we all know, are coming to meet with the school board from 4:15 to 5:00 PM on Sunday, September 30th, so this Sunday. This meeting will take place in the library think tank. SBHS would also like to invite the school members to attend the panel presentation from 1:00 to 2:00 PM in the library on Sunday, September 30th. During this presentation, the high school will welcome the visitation team, and present an overview of our school's core values, beliefs, and student learning expectations. The presentation will include a summary of key data and information from the high school's self-study, issues and challenges we face, and statements about critical strengths and needs. And then students and staff will facilitate this presentation, so, like I was going to say, throughout these last couple of weeks, they have been reaching out to students for a multitude of different events, like, I know I'm going to be a part of an interview panel, there's also, like, this presentations, and that tour guide, so there's a lot going on with that, so schedules will be altered for that next week. And then last week, I think, I think it was a weekend thing, was the annual ski swap, which has always been successful, and we had a lot of volunteers for that, which was great. And then, the TIE Spain students departed yesterday morning, and so they had a great time here, and we also had a great time welcoming them. And then looking a little bit ahead, on October 10th is freshman community service day, as well as PACT and PSAT tests. And then, also Orchard School held its annual, its second annual fun run on Friday, September 14th, which was sponsored by the Orchard PTO. It was well-attended by parents supporting the runners. Kindergarteners and first graders ran one lap around the school grounds, second and third graders did two laps, while the fourth and fifth graders did three. The emphasis on, was, the emphasis was on supporting each other, not on racing. The students and staff were very supportive, as each student crossed the finish line with rainbows and balloons, and water bottles and apples. The Orchard PTO continues to work towards the healthy choice initiatives. It was a very successful event, and a significant portion of the proceeds will go to a two-week circus artist in residence, starting in early October.
The only thing I'd add is that TIE Germany is also here, in addition to the Spain group, so we've welcomed them as well.
Right.
Thanks, Arno.
And then, David, did you have anything to add? Or should I move on to the...
Nope.
Alex, Alex, you wanted to make an announcement?
Yeah, I do have a short announcement here. The Howard Center puts on talks with invited guests, and one coming up November 1st is titled "Vaping E-cigarettes and Joll: The Facts Behind the Smoke Screen." This is a panel discussion with Vermont Commissioner of Health, Mark Levine, and others, followed by Q&amp;A. It is November 1st, 6:00 PM to 7:00 PM, and it's at dealer.com. I intend to attend it, and I will report back what I have learned to the board. And I think this is something that is, is an emerging epidemic, that administrators, school boards, and parents are not yet catching a hold of, but it's something that's emerging very quickly, and it's a very serious problem, and we need to get out in front of this and do something about it. So I'll be there on the first, and our November 6th board meeting, I will provide a report with what I've found. And if anybody else would like to attend, again, it's at dealer.com, November 1st, Thursday, from 6:00 to 7:30 PM. Thank you.
Thanks, Alex. Okay, that brings us to city and school collaboration.
Mm-hmm. So, this is in regards to the November 5th, we have an informational session that needs to occur, it's before the November 6th vote. And we're currently working with the city to come up with whatever we, the legal requirements are to have, this is again, just a draft. Either we, we do it ourselves, or they do it themselves, but we recognize that we probably both should be together in the same place, and having an information session on the relative articles that are going before the voters. So I did talk with Kevin Dorn this afternoon, his legal folks are going to talk about how that can happen or not, and we'll be back with you. But again, I think important to note that Monday, November 5th will be the date, the location will be determined. I think it will likely be over at the city, because they have a meeting that night, it's their Monday night meeting, and that may be most convenient for them to have it there. But again, more information to follow, we'll have an update on, at the October 3rd board meeting.
And you had mentioned that you were trying to schedule a meeting for next week with Kevin, just on the, because we have, sort of have an ongoing collaboration with respect to design and things that are, are starting to coalesce around, now that we've signed an agreement with regard to the land exchange, is that coming together, or is that...
So I, I do, I'm going to meet with him on Friday, I have a variety of other things, so that currently is scheduled, but we haven't talked about this year's reoccurring city manager, head of the city council, school board chair, myself, we haven't talked about those...
Okay.
Going forward, but I will on Friday.
Okay.
Okay.
So next on the agenda is the superintendent's report.
So, Arno did a good job actually, on some of the NEASC information, which is in your packet. I don't necessarily need to go over that in great detail, but the NEASC visit is upon us, and I'll just, we'll hand this out, this is the same letter that was sent out to you before, but it does have kind of the events that are happening throughout the day, including the Sunday, that the board members have been invited to.
And I just wanted to clarify which portions you want us there for, and, I guess amongst the four of us, Elizabeth on the phone, and the three of us who are here, who is planning to attend which sessions? I, my understanding is that there's something from 1 to 2, which is a panel presentation, and we could just attend that to watch it. And then, we were asked to be at the reception from 3:15 to 4:10, and then, we were actually having a meeting with the NEASC visitation team from 4:15 to 5:00, and there's a, there's a draft agenda for a special meeting, for that to happen, from 4:15 to 5:00. So is anyone else, I know that, Martin, you had mentioned that you might be at all or a part of it, which parts are you thinking of?
I'm definitely going to be at the 3:15 and 4:15, I'll probably be at the 1 o'clock as well.
Okay.
I'm not positive, well, at the 1 o'clock, yeah.
Yeah, for me, I'm definitely available for the 3:15 to 5:00. I, I was hoping that someone might be able to cover the 1 o'clock to 2 o'clock, only because I have something that I probably ought to do, I could probably get out of if I needed to. That would make me be late for a 1 o'clock, if I did it, so...
I can make, I can make a point of being at the 1.
Okay.
So Martin, you can do all of them?
Yeah.
Looks like, okay.
And I will be there from 3:15 to 5:00.
Only if there's cheese at the reception. When I see reception, I think cheese. No?
I have no idea.
You can't guarantee that? Well, then I'm not so sure about the 3:15. But definitely the 1 to 4:15.
Great, thanks.
Okay. So, moving right along, right on schedule, we're at master planning and visioning discussion.
Yep, so I'm going to ask John Stewart to come up, and, again, there's a few things we just want to highlight, and important to note that we have, we have a board subcommittee that's been working with us, Martin and Bridget, around just framing a lot of the work that we've been doing. We now are in another phase, after we've now selected the architect firm of Door Whittier to do Phase 2 of the work. And so, we've had a couple meetings, one today, which outlined a little bit more, with more clarity, and so we wanted to give the whole board an update on where we are, and I think important to also solicit your feedback and questions, so, without further ado, John?
Thank you. The, there you have two pages, back-to-back, I think, handout, and then, at your desk, at your tables are just roles and responsibilities for groups that we, we're talking about for Phase 2, so we'll look at those together. The tasks, David said we met with Bridget and Martin on September 17th, and we wanted to put down the tasks that we need to get done, and also, key items that are happening as far as noise at Chamberlain, looking at developments in the city, and put that down on one, one eight-and-a-half-by-eleven sheet, with key dates, because their, time is ticking along, and with the Phase 2 of the high school, middle school, education analysis, master plan, we don't want to lose track of these other items too. So, the, a big one, I won't go through them all, but a big one is, in this stewardship plan that we have, we, we know Phase 2 is, is looking at all the deficiencies in our buildings, we, Phase 1 did that, and Phase 2 is, how can we fashion education in our buildings, high school, middle school, going forward? But we can't lose track in our current, the budget we're going to be doing, well, starting now, but, you know, in earnest in a couple of weeks, can't lose track of what has to stewardship plans across the district, even in these two buildings, if they're going to cause problems. So that's the first thing, we've highlighted that, and we've highlighted that with our architects. And then, another is a key item, the bond vote for the library, City Hall. That, of course, affects our planning, because we're involved with moving our administrative offices, et cetera, and moving the land configuration at Markov School, so it's pretty, pretty obvious that that needs to be there. This, this SWAT analysis is due by board resolution, so that has to be done, and that'll be having, there's a lot of big priorities here, but that has to be done, so that comfortably we can report, the administration can report to the board in December. And then, I know at the last board meeting, you talked about noise explosion maps at Chamberlain, which affects number 4 and number 11, if we soundproof, or if it's worse than that, what do we do? Number 5 is evaluate city-school bonding. We, we know, generally from the capital plan in the budget book, what the city's generally planning. And we know that we have two bond issues out there, one for work that's just being completed now, in this year, and one that was completed in the last two years, but what are our plans? We need to put those together, so citizens of South Burlington can see the whole picture. And we've made some, we've reached out to the city to get more clarification, and in the budget process, the business, the Office of Operations and Finance will take care of that, be, with a view, with that view. The demographer, we need to get with him, particularly for our planning, and also to look at new developments. And Dr. McGivern's in Estonia, helping the country of Estonia do the same kind of thing, their, their, their school enrollments and their demographics, so I thought that was pretty interesting.
Now, I do want to say that, I mean, when the, the last update was done, the demographer did take into account the developments, but we think there's been pretty significant changes. Well, we think, but we want to make sure that that's updated to reflect some of the most current plans that are out there, before we start to make more decisions around capacity.
That's right. Point 7 is in similar, we want to review our current enrollments versus the capacity limits that we just had. And while, I'd love to have that information, I think we'd all like to have the enrollment information now. The state process does the ATM on October 1st, and then verifies that information, so we don't really get the official number till November 15th. But David has asked Ray Mann for information, and we should have some, have analyzed information by the end of next week, to get us a preliminary number on where our enrollments are. Number 8, we just talked about, review the developments in light of the demographer, but also, if a development is going to load up Orchard School, for instance, and we don't think we have the capacity, we need to make a decision now, or at least inform people, well, those kids might go to a different district, so...
So that's far different than students that are already going from that development, but before the development comes online, you know, where that's happening, can we point them, based on our enrollment configuration, to a, to a school that has the capacity? Albeit, that will be, that may come with some level of opposition, because we've told either the developer, or some of the, the folks that are, have put money towards that, that their kids would go here, here, or here. But again, we're trying to be mindful of, in the utilization of our current enrollment, to make informed decisions, so...
But to be clear, mainly those developers are making assumptions about that based on a map, as opposed to coming to you and asking?
Sometimes, sometimes that's true, but I do want to say that in, in some cases, they're looking for, they have in the past, through either an act of 50 permit, they've come to us and said, you know, we have to fill out, do you have capacity?
Mm-hmm.
And in some cases, what, we've been, we've been pushed on what school there would be. It's pretty clear in a lot of the developments, though, that, you know, it's, it's, it doesn't lock the school district into a particular school, long-term, we have that ability. Although, once children start coming to us from a development, then it gets much more complicated.
Yeah, much more difficult. And then 9 and 10 are related, first, first of all, we're getting into Phase 2 right now, and we'll talk about that in more depth, looking at the high school, middle school, analyzing it for, how does it serve our education needs? And then, after that analysis is done, what does it tell us, and where are our priorities? High school, middle school, that's, that's these two, 9 and 10 together, they're both related. So that's, that's a pretty quick run-through for this, this part of the key dates and tasks.
So, question, how does the strength, weakness, opportunity, and, can't remember what the two stands?
Threats.
Thank you, threats. How does that fit into all of these other components that we're working on? And, is that something that should come out before we've done the Phase 2? Isn't the Phase 2 work, part of what would feed into that analysis? I'm just wondering if that date makes sense, if, if we're not talking about Phase 2 being done until February?
Well, the SWAT analysis was originally meant to be sort of step 1 of a big strategic process. It was for us to step back, and that was supposed to be the very basic, like, framework of where we are going as a district. Ideally, that would have been done, you know, previously, frankly, and then that would inform part of what we're doing with the middle school and the high school. It is a little bit of a chicken and egg, because we are going to get very much deeper into the information and the analysis of the high school and middle school specifically, but the SWAT analysis, in my mind, was meant to be a very high-level, you know, 50,000-foot version of, you know, things that David's already doing, sort of putting them all into a framework. So things like, talking to the city about where there might be space for schools, if that becomes an issue with all the increased development that's happening, those kinds of things. And having that framework as a guiding, you know, principle for a deeper dive on strategy, the middle school and the high school being part of that, but then the elementary schools and, and the overall district as well. But we sort of are at the stage now where we really need to move forward, obviously on the middle school and the high school. And I, I don't, I don't see the SWAT analysis as an emerging epidemic, that administrators, And I, I don't, I don't see the SWAT analysis as an incredibly onerous process. I don't think it needs to involve a huge number of people. I mean, it's really just a very basic framework to start the strategic discussion, and we don't have a board resolution regarding an actual strategy document. It's more just, have we really thought through some of these things to make sure that we're not missing them as we, as we do this work?
Yeah, so I, I don't, I don't disagree with that. I think, you know, you can talk about, we now have more data available to us, and enrollment, you know, fluctuations are much more known. So you could say that's a strength. We know that our enrollment numbers are going to stay pretty consistent through 2023, so that's a strength. The weakness could be that we have some schools that are, have distributed numbers, right? And so points to maybe some questions related to where we might designate the students. So again, that's, you know, that's what we might say, an area of weakness, that we've got that distribution going on. The opportunities, we can, I'm giving you one, like, frame, and opportunities, we can, we can re-point that, as noted in one of the components here that John just spoke about. And then, you know, I think the threats continue to be what happens with continued building, you know, if we significantly exceed enrollment capacities beyond what the demographer says, because of, you know, the other factor, people just want to move here, you know? But I, this is a, that, that was a much more specific response, but overall, you know, the SWAT analysis for the district is that we currently are functioning, we currently have capacity, you know, so there's kind of that overview that we can, we can provide. It should have some data in there, right? So, and it's going to have the demographic data. It will have some of the financial data in there as well. So, I, that's what my thinking was. As far as moving it up, maybe we could. This was, again, this is a draft document. It was just to try to put these in some chronological order that made sense around, you know, you probably ought to be doing, you know, reviewing a bonding plan before you get too far into long-term ideas around what you might be doing. We should understand collectively from the city, and the city from us, that we have some, maybe some significant things that are going to be coming up before the voters, and we need to be strategic, you know, timely, and how we, we look at that, so.
Yeah, the last thing I'd say about it is that I could just see the SWAT analysis, if it were sort of finished, or if it were, you know, a draft of it, where they're, we talked about this visioning process, and we'll get more into that in a minute, that's going to take place with regard to the middle school and the high school. A lot of people are going to come at that process from the community, and we want them to bring their own input. It would be helpful for them sometimes, though, to, the strengths and weaknesses are really sort of what's internal to the district, and the opportunities and threats are what's external, and different, people have different levels of knowledge of those. You know, if we had them laid out clearly and framed for people, it might just make that discussion a little deeper, and they might sort of understand where folks are coming from, when we bring up different options, or, or ask them different questions to respond to.
Okay, the second page is focused on the high school and middle school facilities master plan, and this is to update the board and the public about Phase Two. There are many moving parts, and there are committees and visioning sessions, and tours planned and that kind of thing. And so this, this lays it out generally. We did have a, a meeting today with a working group who consists of 10 people going forward, and we have a little bit more information that was on here. First of all, I do want to say that next week, Doran Whittier, the architects, will be here at the board meeting to kind of give their perspective on the project and an overview, and to indicate what's been done and what some of our plans are. So that'll, that'll come next week. This is just a kind of an introduction to where we are. We have, our contract is being reviewed by the attorney, that's the first thing. And secondly, we have this working group of South Burlington staff, two board members, and eventually there'll be students on this committee. After the visioning session, which is tentatively going to happen November 7th, students will be able to go to that, some students from the high school and middle school, and from that group of students that attend, there'll be one from the high school, one from the middle school, and our working group. So that'll complete the working group at that point. The second big milestone that's coming up is a principal's workshop set for next week. It was for October 3rd, but it conflicts with NEESC a little bit, so it'll happen next week. And that's for the architects to collect data from the principals, and the high school and middle school meet together, so that they communicate better. They know what, what one school's saying and the other school's saying. So, three big things. What are the schools' educational goals? That's what the architects are going to try to glean from this. What are existing programs and services, and what strengths and deficiencies currently impact learning? So that, that's the reason for these principal meetings. On a side note, we, the architects stuck around after our working group today and did the same process with Joanne Godak regarding special education for both the high school and middle school, that, we spent about an hour on that, so she provides some great information to the architects to get started. The architects really want to get started, they're looking at this end date of January, February, and decided, said, boy, we have to keep things moving, so that's what we're really endeavoring to do. Point Three here says that the school board would act as a building committee. Well, we talked about that name today, and the school board would be a planning committee. So the main reason are to get information, that the school board's informed about what's going on, and that the school board could delegate subcommittees or individuals to form tasks to support the study, provide some direction to the architects and make decisions in the best interest of the school district. So to keep the elected body informed through this whole process, because it's a big process. And we, our goal is to make sure that we've done everything, I'm talking a lot, sorry.
Oh, that's great.
Our goal is to make sure that everyone hears about it. So when a proposal comes to the public, people won't be able to say very much, anyway, that, boy, they haven't heard about it, because we're, that's one of the goals. So that's for that group. There's a visioning session. Like I say, November 7th, we, we've tentatively reserved the Trader Dukes to have an off-site meeting during the day. It's a wide spectrum of people who are interested in schools, our schools, with diverse backgrounds to offer varying perspectives about what our school should be, now and in the future. And the, one of the reasons we went with Doran Whittier is they have experience in doing this, in gathering information from people, and then fashioning it into some options that we could consider. So this will be, it'll definitely be one meeting, and there'll be follow-up after that. We have to now determine that who's going to be on that group. And so we had some discussion about that today, and we're going to talk about that a little more. One of the key things about this group is, we want to define the charge or the responsibility of those who are participating. So when they're there, they don't have expectations that, wow, I decided, I indicated I think we should have three gyms at the middle school, and it doesn't happen, but they're not disappointed. You know what I mean? It's just, have some expectations, that we really want their input, and it's going to be a group effort. There'll be some tours, too. Doran Whittier has done some work in Massachusetts and Shelburne, so there, there will be off-site tours, and we have to determine the mix of people who'd be going there. They would also be selecting schools that they know have been recently upgraded or rebuilt, or, or built by, and designed by architects other than them. So it's not just them, and I think that's a good point, that we see some perspective. And then, finally, the district, we, it was, it was on one of our points earlier, but your office needs to work with Bart Maselli and facilities, and make sure we know what our needs are for this coming budget, you know, things that absolutely need to get done, or we're going to have other troubles, so. That's kind of quick through this, but.
And that was identified in, in that previous sheet.
Yeah, it was, first point, I think, on the first sheet.
Yeah, that we need, that we really need to make sure that, that's supporting that.
Right.
Because we do have some items that we could be safety and/or critical needs.
One other thing, that the principals, like, Carsten, it's, it's a good time to have that NEESC study, because the self-study was just completed by the high school staff, and Principal Burke and his staff. And so that's done, and there's Section Seven, Principal Seven has to do with facilities and community support, and so that's there, and it's a document that's written, at least that opinion's out there. On the middle school side, Carsten and Assistant Principal Hyatt have a leadership team that has taken questions from Doran Whittier and worked those through. So there's some good work done at the school level, basic, that we can build the foundation, it's the foundation that we can build upon. And that's, I thought, the important parts.
Thanks, John. So I don't know if there's questions from the board. Again, this was, this was a little high-level information for you. Again, a couple of board members are more knowledgeable about what's going on, Martin and Bridgette. And again, we're, we're working through this, you know, as early as today with Doran Whittier on how best to move it. But as John said, there's a pretty aggressive timeline. Doran Whittier did also provide a, you know, a, you know, a spreadsheet that, you know, had a variety of these tasks on them, and identified some tentative dates on how to do that, to get us to the end, the end goal, so.
I think they'll share more of that, there's some more clarity next week, when they come.
So I'm not sure, Bridgette, if there's any questions from board members?
Yeah, any questions?
I guess what I was wondering was, on Number Five, with the trip to Massachusetts, who in particular was going to be going? Is this something that board members are invited to, or?
Yes, that.
Well, what is going to be accomplished?
So, yes, board members.
Mm-hmm.
We would like, you know, again, this is a Doran Whittier response, probably would be better, but the idea is, is to get a good cross-section of the community, including board members and teachers.
Yep.
But it's, instead of being in the hypothetical about spaces that support good instruction, to be able to actually see the space, and then to have conversations with students, staff, board members, et cetera, you know, students, around how this, how this process worked for them, and what have been kind of the deliverables for them, and, and how that's worked for them.
Yeah.
So that's really the, we do, as, as John said, we have one that's closer, you know, with, with Shelburne.
Yep.
And we think that having, we can't spend an exorbitant amount of time doing this, but we do think, you know, maybe a couple of days, with a day out and an overnight, and finish that up, you know, with a return trip would allow folks to get a pretty good cross-section of options.
Thank you.
Elizabeth, did you have any questions?
I didn't hear anything.
Okay.
We didn't really say that Elizabeth was on the phone, probably, but she is, or did we start out?
I think you might have mentioned that at the beginning.
I don't know.
Anyway, Elizabeth is on the phone.
Elizabeth is here with us, and she's by phone.
Okay. Well, thank you for that thorough update, John.
Sure, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks a lot.
Yeah. So then we'll move on to Vermont School Boards Association resolutions discussion. So Martin had brought these to us at a previous meeting. We've got another copy here, and I think the hope was that if anyone had thoughts or questions, they could ask them, or suggestions about how to vote on these various different things, that we could talk about that. So the, the annual meeting is the 17th, or, I'm sorry, the 18th and 19th of October. So we do have two more meetings before, before Martin and Elizabeth and I are there, but it would be good to have any thoughts that folks have on them, if they've had a chance to review them, any questions? Martin, did you have anything else to say about them?
My recommendation was just, I, I agreed with the way the subcommittee of the VSBA came out on all of these, in that we should follow what their votes were. I mean, so, without going over what each of those are, I, I think that there was, you know, there wasn't anything very controversial, like, very close split votes. You know, there was maybe a couple where one or two people voted against or abstained, and it was, as you see, a fairly large subcommittee of something like 12 people or so, so.
Yeah, after our discussion last time, I had another, I just had another read-through and agree with you. I asked a couple of questions last time, but I'm, I was happy with how the recommendations kind of came out on each of them. Did you have any thoughts, Alex? And my only question is also whether we should bring it back next agenda, only because Steve can't be here, and it might be good to just sort of wrap up one last time before we went off, so we knew what our marching orders were.
Yeah, I, I do. I don't know how flexible a document this is at this time, but it, it seems as though this is something that school boards should be getting involved in, talking about the tobacco wage and the initiatives that have so far failed to raise the age to 21. And I guess you're starting to know what a certain priority that I have on this issue. But it, it seems to me, is it something that school boards need to be involved in, because the nicotine addiction is negatively, negatively affecting the career outcomes of our graduates. And, and I've got some anecdotal evidence of that, you know, just, just being asked in a job interview, do you smoke? And I can answer, and I was actually offered that particular job, but if I had answered no, perhaps the outcome of that may have been different. So this is something that doesn't immediately seem to be a school board business, but when we are in the business of raising kids to have successful careers, and you look at it that way, it becomes very much our business. And I think that we should be involved in standing up for it, if, if we so desire. And I feel like, you know, it may be a little bit late to the show for this particular go-around, but I think it's something that needs to be discussed at the VSBA level.
Yeah, I mean, this board can, we could put in a proposal for a resolution. Usually what happens with those, with those kind of proposals is, unless it's something that absolutely has to be done immediately.
Yeah.
They ask for it to be submitted the following year to go through the regular process, because there may be some wordsmithing and such that happens before it arrives on the October meeting. So, so my suggestion would be, I was just trying to look to, to see if they have anything already in policy, which is actually possible, and I'll, I'll double-check and see if they already have something on that issue. So if we want a resolution, I would propose that we put it in, so it goes through the process for, for next years. But if it's something, just in general, we want the association to take a position on, I, if, well, let me, let me back, if, if there's a bill introduced, almost certainly there will be.
Mm-hmm.
There's already a lot of discussion about needing to continue to, to put the bill forward like this, particularly for vaping and whatever, Juuling and such, and raising the age to 21, that the VSBA might be asked for their opinion about it. And the, the VSBA executive would go to their board, you know, to the VSBA board, to get guidelines, and that would happen sometime in January, February. And almost certainly, I can assure you, that the, the VSBA, if they were asked for their opinion, they would say, it's a good idea that we raise the age, just from discussions we've had. So as far as, for this particular year, I think we're a little late.
Yeah.
It doesn't mean that the VSBA wouldn't be at the table, you know, and, and we can separately encourage, you know, if there is such a bill for them to, to plug for. separately encourage, you know, if there is such a bill for them to, to plug for it, we can, we can do that separately.
Yeah. And I don't know if we need to, to warn it for action or something like that, but if, if you're looking for feedback, that's my feedback.
Right. Okay. I appreciate that. And I'll look and see if I can find whether, it may already be covered. There may already be a resolution. So.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Because, because these are just essentially adding, there's already a list, a whole number of resolutions. They're essentially guidelines for the Executive Director of the VSBA when, when she's dealing with the legislature or the Agency of Education or the State Board of Education. It's like, here's your sideboards on how you should be advocating.
Yeah.
So this is a cumulative and we already have quite a few directives already. So I can double check.
Okay. Thanks, Mike.
Okay. So that brings us to policy work and specifically the student freedom of expression policy, the first reading of three readings of that.
So it's in your packet. And there was some preliminary work that we did on this, which resulted in the red line or the red additions, red print additions. I think it's available for the first reading. We did get some legal responses back as well. I think I sent those out. I do have hard copies if, if, if board members would like those.
I think we got that at 4:30 today, something like that.
Yeah, but I have hard copies if you'd like to go along. But this is an opportunity for us just to listen to board members around how you want to move forward and solicit feedback from the public.
So I'm happy to start.
Sure.
So, I mean, I, I think that we should follow the, and this is something I think Dave and I talked a little bit about, follow the language of the statute that sets forth requirements for this policy as closely as possible. There may be a few places where we think that clarification is really called for, but I'm not sure. I've kind of looked over this once. And there were a couple of areas where absolutely I think it's kind of counter to what the statute is. And definitely those parts, you know, the red lines should be struck. Perhaps there's a couple of places where it doesn't harm us or to, we're not going away from what the statute requires. Any event, so with respect to that, I think the main issue is, there's two main issues. One is with respect to implementation. It's at the bottom of the page. Subject only to the conditions of one through seven below, a student journalist may exercise freedom of speech and freedom of the press and school-sponsored media. Supervising students and media supervisors of school-sponsored media are responsible for determining the content of their respective media. You know, before that, there's a definition of what a supervising student is. It's the equivalent of the editor of a newspaper, but this is obviously much broader as far as publications could be. Podcasts could be, video, could be any number of things. And the media advisor is the school employee, co-curricular as I understand it. So it's not necessarily a teacher, but it's a school employee. So the statute and the, the idea of the statute is to give student voice, is to have freedom of the press, freedom of speech and such for the students. What is added in this section is the media advisors being in the loop for determining the content. And that is precisely against what the concept of this is, that it's, it's the student's right and it's the students that are deciding the content, subject to the conditions that, that are labeled in one through seven. So, I mean, my first suggestion would be that we go to the language of the statute, where the language of the VSBA actually pretty closely follows the statutory language, actually. This is based on the Vermont School Board Association policy example, you know, a, a model policy for us. So the next page where it has the seven content restrictions, I think that we need to strike number six, which adds a restriction. I think we have to be particularly careful of adding any restrictions that go beyond what the statute provides. And I would also argue that it is somewhat redundant because number six, which would be, you're not allowed to have content that incites an immediate breach of peace, violence, or unlawful activity, is covered in both five and seven in here. Anything that's inciting a breach of peace or violence, I think very arguably would create an imminent danger of materially or substantially disrupting the ability of the school to perform its educational mission. And number five specifically talks about violating state or federal law. So I would strike that. I would also strike the red, you know, the addition in number seven as well, which I think is, I don't think it adds anything. I don't think it's clarifying anything. Those are the ones that jumped out at me. And perhaps in the second reading, looking at this more closely, and if, if the esteemed Mike Donahue has any other input on this, because I think he helped to get this legislation passed, that, that would be helpful. But I think those are the two that seem to most substantively alter what this model policy and, and the underlying legislation provides for. That's my more than two cents worth, dollar and a half at least.
We, this, we had put this together in support of it, number one, being on the agenda. We did, we did some of this initial work. And then we had previously, yesterday, we actually went through this again. And I think we essentially arrived right back where you were, what you were speaking about, Martin, about we should be careful not to create any sort of confusion with, with the intent and wording of the law and the VSBA policy, we think, you know, did that. So we, we kind of came right back to where Martin was indicating that we, unless, unless there's a really specific area here, I can't cite one of those, but we shouldn't be adding the, the red, the red print in here. So.
Right. So the one thing that is, is not necessarily clear and what should be pondered and perhaps ask, circle back to your legal counsel or VSBA, is, you know, there is a role for the media advisor, obviously. And I would say, you know, the media advisor is, under the statute, supposed to supervise or provide instruct, instruction. We've changed that to provide oversight, guidance, and instruction. I think probably going back to the language of the statute makes sense there as well. But I believe the concept is certainly that, that the media advisor is somebody who can be looking at material relative to the six content restrictions, that there's probably, should be a role for that individual. And I'd love to hear from Mike if he disagrees with this, that, that helps a little bit keeping that student supervisor or supervising student out of potential trouble by actually having a process where at least just on those six items, not what the content is, well, it is content, but, but not on what the subject is, but seeing if it's libelous, et cetera, that, that we should have somebody within the school, the advisor, checking on that just to, as, to protect the student, if anything else, to protect the student supervisor or supervising student. I see a nod from Mike, so I think that's.
It's a good sign.
So perhaps, I mean, maybe we don't need that. Maybe that's clear enough. But if we want to do one clarification, I, I would, in fact, I think we, I would suggest that we circle back to either the VSBA and/or your attorney, just to say, we'd like to make it kind of clear that the media advisor can check the content for these six restrictions. So, and I think that helps as far as the concern that, oh, well, these students are, we're just putting them on the firing line there for.
My only question about that, yeah, is whether that then puts the responsibility on the, the media advisor or whether, because it says that the policy does not authorize or protect content of school-sponsored media. I just wonder if, if saying that they're sort of, does that create some responsibility for them or is the responsibility still lie with the students? And they're there sort of as a, as a guide or a sounding board, but the students are really responsible for making sure that things are, meet these guidelines.
I mean, my, well, at least my thought was that, that the, the students are trying to decide on what they're covering, what, what the content is. Yeah, they should be instructed as far as these guidelines, but these are the areas where an individual student could potentially get in trouble possibly, if there's something libelous. And it's a matter of having that one step, just, you know, just, they can't say that, oh, you can't publish this article because it's, it's negative towards the administration. No, they, but they can say that, no, this, this is libelous or this does any of these other number of items. I don't know if that, I understand what you're saying. It's, it's tough to balance. There's a responsibility, I'm saying there's a responsibility certainly for deciding the content on the student. But I think that there should also be some responsibility, at least with respect to these restrictions, that, that stays with the school, with the advisor, is what I'm saying. I think Alex.
Yeah, that's why my hand is up, because it seems as though this, it, it, there's a lot of latitude when, to me, it seems as though there could be a lot of latitude when you're defining libelous and slanderous, slanderous. So if you want to go back to the Burlington example where the, the student newspaper, they published something regarding a particular member of the staff or administration. And I believe that's part of what the trouble that they came into is, is the first reaction was, hey, wait, this is either libelous, slanderous, slanderous, or an invasion of privacy. And that's why, I believe that's why it was initially censored.
Well, I, I don't, I don't.
I don't know why.
Know that that's why it was necessarily, but, but actually.
Sorry.
Yeah. I think it was censored because it was negative towards the school.
Well, that's the thing.
Yeah.
Is that, is that you could, if, if somebody were inclined to, they could say, you know, if you could say anything negative about the school district or particular personnel, you could use one and two as a reasons to stop the publication. It would be an overreach.
Right, right. True. I mean.
They would try it.
I would go with, if I was the school administrator trying to stop it, I'd go right to number six. I wouldn't, you know, and that's what I think they tried to do post hoc. They tried to do that afterwards to justify, they say, oh, well, no, it disrupts the school, you know, its ability to perform its job. Yeah, that can be a little slippery. And there, but, you know, the, the, at least in the statute, and I should double check in this, that if the school is going to try to prohibit publication, you know, that school's administration has the burden of providing lawful justification without undue delay. I mean, these things are litigated.
Oh, yeah.
So there are standards for all of those numbers, you know, those six items. So certainly the administration can, but I would trust that the administration would, would follow what the law is with respect to those six items. So I'm, I'm going to have to double check because I think that we should probably have in here, if it's not, if I'm not, if I'm just not reading it right, the section explaining that, you know, putting the, the restrictions on, on the school for what's called prior restraint on, on any content. So that may be one suggestion I'll have. And let me see if I'm missing this.
And I think there's some training that would, that needs to go along with this.
Mm-hmm.
Because what you might view as, you know, slanderous may be different than what somebody else. And so we, I mean, I'm just speaking that, you know, this is also something you probably, you know, administratively, we need to be pretty quick in response to, but we need to be, you know, it needs to be, you know, probably a few people that are reviewing this with, I think, a reference back to some of the standards that are specific to the six areas.
Yeah.
Or what we will likely reduce to the six components. But I, I certainly don't feel like, you know, I could cite those right now.
Yeah.
Right.
Also lately in the news, we've had discussion of a Supreme Court nominee who's, you know, discussing his history and putting it in the student newspaper may also come up with bumping up against number three, where we do not authorize contents that may be defined as obscene, gratuitously profane, threatening, or intimidating. But some of the things that I've read about in the media are definitely obscene. And they, and they are involving a very important newsworthy subject. And how do we get around that?
Well, I think there, again, there are definitions of what would qualify under number three. There are standards for that.
Yeah.
I mean, and if there's a question, it, it, it's going to be up to the administration to show that in fact something is obscene under those qualifying standards. If there's a, a real issue on something, they could even ask for advice. Hopefully that wouldn't happen very often. I don't think this happens very often. But, but those are established standards. And, and it's a matter of making sure that the advisor is familiar with that, which I'm sure she is. So at least, and I'm only talking about the newspaper. I know there's other publications. This goes beyond just the newspaper. But I guess the one other question that I would have is, is that provision right after those seven, it says now, but it will be six. I think that's where we're trying to capture, where it says, district staff may restrain the distribution of content in school-sponsored media that can be demonstrated to violate any of the conditions one through six above. That may not really quite capture what, what the, the law provides, which is a school may restrain the distribution of content in student media described in subsection E, provided that the school's administration shall have the burden of providing lawful justification without undue delay. I think that language or something like it is more consistent with what it actually in the, well, it is exactly what is in the law, but.
Mm-hmm.
So with those two changes. I can talk to you later about which ones those are.
Hard to follow. Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm in agreement with Martin's suggestions. I'm much more comfortable with mirroring closer to what's in the law than, than trying to add on to it or change it.
I don't think it's any problem changing student supervisor to supervising student if that's, that doesn't matter.
Okay. Are there any comments from Elizabeth? No?
No.
Okay.
I've been following along. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments from the public? Yes.
Thank you. I just wanted to salute the South Burlington School District for addressing an important Vermont education law enacted last year for First Amendment protections for journalism students, teachers, advisors. My name is Mike Donahue. I'm a resident of South Burlington, also a product of the city school system. And my career in journalism is doing part to this school system and Rick Marcott in particular. So, and it's been both in writing and in teaching journalism. So the so-called New Voices legislation was passed last year after lawmakers heard from students, teachers, advisors, the Vermont Principals Association, the School Boards Association, among others. And I was asked to get involved because the Vermont Press Association and the New England First Amendment Coalition was asked to sort of coordinate a legislative push on this. And your board member, Martin Land, as a state representative, played an important role in getting this law through the House Judiciary Committee. There was interesting push. There was interesting pushback at Burlington High School about things that were covered. Students came in and testified about the fact that there was pushback on coverage of potential strike, or teacher negotiations and strike in the city of Burlington, when in fact, the rest of the media, the free press, Channel Five, Three Twenty Two, were all reporting on teacher negotiations and everything like that. There was, they had a bond issue for handicap accessibility in the schools, and again, everybody was covering it, but they were getting pushback and being monitored and being, being, their stories were being read by the administration while they were writing them even, as they testified. I've only taken a brief look at, at the draft. Much of what Martin said is, what I'm concerned is that the draft expands potential censorship beyond the legislation and what Governor Scott signed into law last May. The six provisions restricted by the state law have been increased now to seven, and I would again ask you to drop number seven. It is redundant. Number seven, just so you know, is based on a 1969 U.S. Supreme Court decision, basically known as Tinker versus the Des Moines School District. It is also known as the Black Armbands case, where students were thrown out of school because there were black armbands. There was nothing disruptive. The U.S. Supreme Court said that disrupted student learning, they just had black armbands as a means of protest during the Vietnam War. So-
So you mean number six, that you did?
Six, six in yours, the red, the red one-
Yeah, the red.
I would delete.
Right, right, right. Yeah, okay. I just wanted to confirm.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, sorry. Good, good point, yeah. I, I think that just repeats what is in number seven. And, and for the record, having talked to the Burlington principal when they had the issue about 10 days ago in Burlington, it was in fact number seven that he was citing as a reason that they were trying to censor the students. It was not one or two. And when I pointed out to him that essentially the students posted administrative charges that the Agency of Education had filed against the Director of Guidance, you know, it was a public record that was put up on a public website. And, I mean, it wasn't that they gave a lot of editorial comment to, it just said, here, here it is, read it for yourself, kind of thing. And it was interesting that it was taken down, but then when the rest of the media jumped on it, and I salute those student editors for breaking the story, once everybody else jumped on the bandwagon, it was like, okay, you can put it back up now. So, and, and we are in a special time in our country's history right now with trying to figure out what is truth. And I, I would contend that, you know, this legislation is very, very important to try to teach students how to sort out truth from fiction and everything. Also, the last paragraph dealing with taking action against the media advisor, again, I would encourage, it says, "A media advisor may be disciplined for taking reasonable, may not be disciplined for taking reasonable and appropriate action." But again, some words of the legislation was taken out, and not just disciplined, but dismissed, suspended, reassigned, or transferred. And I would ask you to consider putting those words back in so that somebody is not just saying, well, we transferred you, you, you weren't really disciplined. I mean, I think that's an issue where student advisors across the nation have been dismissed from their jobs, as teachers even, not just as, as a club advisor, but, or suspended, reassigned, transferred, moved from schools even. They were transferred from schools to another school. So I would encourage you to put all five words in there, like the legislation has. And I would support Martin on, I think he was mentioning, I mean, the advisor is just that. It's an advisor. And I, I served as a co-advisor at St. Michael's College for the student newspaper over there. And you try to give the best advice you can to students, and they listen 99% of the time, I'd say. You, you explained the short-term ramifications, long-term ramifications, with what they're gonna print maybe, and they have to make that decision. But in the end, as long as it's not libelous, slanderous, an invasion of privacy, other things like that, it was pretty much keeping the hands off and letting students learn, which they sometimes, kids sometimes stumble when they're learning, you know? I'm sure we've probably had fires in the chemistry lab sometimes, or explosions that weren't planned, or something like that. But, you know, the students are learning. So, I don't know if you have any, and, and again, I, I would point out that it does say, "Each school or its governing body should adopt a written policy consistent with the provisions of this section." I mean, the law says specifically, and I think on a couple of these, the draft that I've seen goes beyond being consistent with the law. So, I don't know if anybody's got any questions.
Yeah, Mike, I've got a question.
Sure.
How, how do you get around the wiggle room when we're not authorizing the content that is libelous or slanderous? And, you know, basically going back to my question from five minutes ago. And furthermore, down on this paragraph where you suggested adding those five words, it says, "May not be disciplined for taking reasonable and appropriate action to protect a student journalist." You know, how, how do you get around, or how do you deal with one person who may say that it is a reasonable and appropriate action to protect a student journalist by censoring a particular article that person wants to publish? Because it, let me get back to what I'm saying, is, is it seems as though that there's a lot of wiggle room in some of the words in this policy. And I'm concerned that they're gonna be stretched by anybody who's under pressure to either keep something from coming out, or to force something out.
Well, I think the legislature spent considerable amount of time, both in the Education Committee, in the House, in the Senate, and, and Judiciary Committee, to, to try to figure out. And they came up with these six areas.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, libelous, slanderous, constitutes, and unwarranted, invasion of privacy.
Mm-hmm.
And as Martin said, those are all pretty well defined-
Yeah.
-through case law, whether it's the Tinker decision, Hazelwood decision-
Yeah, okay.
...everything like that. So the media advisor is gonna rely on those court cases as to whether it was reasonable and appropriate action to tell the students they shouldn't be doing this, or they shouldn't be printing this story, that it's a violation, it may violate the code of ethics. I assume the, the teacher advisor talks about the various codes of ethics that journalists have, and, you know, it's always been good discussions, I've found.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
It's good. We had some good, good feedback. We'll bring it back for another reading.
Can we do two?
We do, well, we-
Three years.
Three, yeah, so next would be one more discussion, I think, and then action would be on the, the third-
If you're ready, yeah.
-the third night, if we're ready. So then in terms of making changes, who's gonna be responsible?
I've written down the ones, and I'll get them to-
Okay. Excellent.
Mike, did you write down the Mike Donahue suggestions on the last paragraph? Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. All right. So we will move along to executive limitations, policy monitoring, number 2.4, financial condition and activities. Look at the previous fiscal year.
So I'm gonna ask both Amity and Gary to come forward. They'll go over some of the specific details. I don't know, again, how the board would like to proceed, but we'll give you the highlights of some of the particular detail policies and some of the evidence. Again, this is kind of the first time you're saying it, so I don't believe you'll probably be ready to take action on it, but they're here to kind of walk you through it, answer any questions you have specific to 2.4. There's a little bit of a format discussion change, and I'll let them speak to the board about the format change. So, welcome, Amity and Gary.
Welcome.
I'll start with the, with our dot press process behind the slight format change. What's included in the 2.4 monitoring report was the FY17 reports, which contain, for your reference, which contain highlighted changes. The FY18 report, what we're reporting on from last fiscal year, since this is the initial base report, we didn't highlight changes that crossed fiscal years into FY17s. It seemed like in preparing it, from, just from a, from an understandability perspective, it was not wise to cross fiscal years to include the last changes from FY17 with the base report. Our subsequent reports for 2.4 will, will contain highlighted changes going forward.
And I think this brings you back to the board calendar, so when you see 2.4 come up the second time, then you would see those, as Gary said, you'd see the delineated, highlighted areas.
Okay.
So I thought I'd just kind of briefly walk through and just highlight some of the-
That would be great.
-key points, rather than going through everything, if that's acceptable to all of you. All right. So, under detail policy one, that is about expending more funds than have been either received or budgeted for the fiscal year that we're talking about, which was fiscal year 18. Under evidence number two, I just would speak to the, you know, FY18 is still subject to audit, so the numbers that you're given in these reports are unaudited. But it showed that our expenditures came in below budget by $936,408. And the actual revenues received also came in below budget by $817,279. Details of those numbers are shown in the attached unaudited financial report that's also provided. Under detail policy two, I'm, I'm sorry, just, do we want to ask questions after each policy, or do we want to ask questions?
I think, unless anyone else has a different opinion, it might be good for you to sort of go through your presentation-
Okay.
...and then we can circle back to-
Okay, great.
-questions. I think that would be easier for, for your flow of, of presentation.
Okay, great. So under detail policy two, that is incurred debt in an amount greater than can be repaid by a certain otherwise unencumbered revenues within 90 days. Our evidence for FY18 was referring, referring to the tax anticipation note. Our needs to borrow were very low, and historically have been very low. We, it depends on cash flow, which can vary from state payments and federal payments, and then our taxes received from the city. So in 2018, we did have a one tax anticipation note of $3 million that incurred an interest expense of $3,423. The table here shows histor- historical data on that as well. Under detail policy three, we talk about using any long-term reserves. And under number one, we have $300,000 in a capital reserve fund currently. In 18, we originally asked the voters to add $300,000 to that. With the failed budget votes of two, we decided to eliminate that funding for that year. So the fund still stands at $300,000 at this point. Our retirement fund for our support staff is being managed by SEI, and they invest our assets, and to date has grown quite nicely by 9%, thanks to the market. We hope for those continued long-term improvements. And all of those reserves were used properly for just the payments to the retirees and no other purposes. The district completed projects that were in the FY16 voter-approved bond for multiple, multitude of projects, which are listed later. Through June 30th, we had expended 2.5, 2.2 million, $535,941. Reason that's more than 2.5 million is we did transfer from our months in field revenue into the bond project to cover some of the expenses from the field work that was done. And all of the payments that we've used to date in, in the bond have been approved by the city treasurer, too, so. The scholarship funds are still handled by the school's foundation, and those are, they have a team of folks that determine those scholarships, and then they also have an accountant that takes care of their records, so we've seen those accounting records. So we are in compliance. Detail policy four is to conduct, it conduct interfund shifting in amounts greater that can be, then can be restored to a condition of discrete fund balance by certain otherwise unencumbered revenues within 30 days. Sounds very complicated. The, the district has two interfund transfers that we do, which means we take from the general fund and transfer into our nutritional services fund to help offset prior year's deficits. That's a voter-approved for $50,000. And then we transfer into the general fund from our schools-out enterprise fund to help offset district expenses that we provide that program for an amount of $40,000, also approved at budget time. So we do report that these transfers were made, and no other interfund transfers were made. In addition to those general fund transfers, we just talk about how on, in accounting, we have one big checking account, and we do, our accounting system is set up to transfer funds between an interfund account. It's, you know, kind of a complicated thing with schools, but it just allows us to have one checking account rather than multiple accounts for each of those funds. And it's tracked by our auditors with those fund transfer accounts. Number, detail policy five is failure to settle payroll debts and, and payroll and debts in a timely manner. All payroll dates were made on time, and also the debts that go along with that. And during the fiscal year 18, we did identify three large invoices that were over $10,000, paid over 90 days from the invoice date. We did some research on the, the history of thou, of those invoices, and two of those three were for special education service providers that required validation of the services, so it delayed some of that at the time, as well as processing the making of the paint, the invoice from one office to the business office. We aren't sure what happened in that process. So we've tried doing some work with the vendor, too, to, to sort of alleviate those in the future. There was another invoice with a payment that was over 90 days and over $10,000, and that was due to a missing invoice that wasn't determined to be missing until much later. So we do have an exhibit showing the list of those invoices for information.
We did, not to interrupt, but we looked at this, this in, in pretty big depth, and we, we determined that, you know, that we were in compliance, because we, one of the keys were, we weren't, we weren't builder penalized for any, any late payments throughout the entire fiscal year.
Okay, right. And so that was a number three, too, that we had no late payment fees in 18.
That was one that, a considerable amount of time, you said earlier, both Amity and Gary were, were concerned about that particular area of compliance, and spent a good chunk of time kind of working through that.
Right. And there were no contracts or obligations that extended into future years that were signed, other than labor contracts. And we just talked about the settlement of those contracts. I don't think we need to reiterate that piece so much. Leases in FY18, there were final approvals in July of 2017 for an equipment lease that totaled $707,000. That was four years, a four-year term that was for bus, dump truck, video surveillance cameras, accounting, human resource systems, and computer equipments. And the rate on that was 2.90%. Then in December, there was an additional approved purchase of two used buses totaling $109,900, and those were under a three-year lease through Mercedes-Benz Financial. Detail policy six talks about allowing tax payments or other government ordered payments or filings to be overdue or inaccurate. to be overdue or inaccurately filed. There is a table that just outlines all of the things that we are required to file, and I can report that everything was filed on time. Most, many early, some right on time. We take good pride of that, that's for certain. Detail Policy Number 7 is making a single unbudgeted purchase or commitment of greater than 25, that is a commitment of greater than $25,000 or an addition of a .5 FTE or greater teacher. So, we looked at, we had additional, a 1.0 teacher added that was a contingency. So, it was, it is a different, an additional FTE that wasn't actually listed, but it was kind of expected it possibly could happen. But then, in September of '17, there was also an additional 1.0 added at Chamberlain for an elementary special ed split position. And also, there was that lease purchase of two used school buses that were utilized with the Winuski School contract, and also we utilized those buses as well. And the, the generation of revenue on that Winuski contract covered the expense by far. Detail Policy Number 8 says spending of prior year's undesignated fund balance. And the preliminary results for '18 show the general fund balance projected to be $623,971. However, each year, we designate a part of our fund balance from the 2000, in this case, '16 year. So, you, when you look at that number, you have to subtract what we'd already designated. And so, it leaves us with a fund balance carry forward to 2020, and this is unaudited, as I said, for, of $70,536. So, it's pretty significantly down. And I can say that the health insurance clawback, that loss of $304,000 would have actually added to that. So, it would have been about a $347,000 fund transfer had we not lost that revenue. Detail Policy Number 9, fail to aggressively pursue receivables after a reasonable grace period. We, the Schools Out program made great progress with their old debts. There was some write-off done at the end of June board meeting, I believe with John Obin. And then they have a bookkeeper now who works very diligently, along with the director, to keep these accounts current. Or, at the very least, they're in contact with families and they're getting their payments in. Either payment plans have been made. And so, they are definitely pursuing on a very much more active basis, and they have that much more current. And Detail Policy 10 is to accept non-resident tuition students unless tuition is being paid by another Vermont school district. And we do not do that currently. So, we own, all the tuition students that we have are coming from other towns that don't have schools. No private pays. And I think that detail, or ends this part of the process. And then attached were some exhibits, as well as the unaudited financial report.
Thanks, Emily.
Welcome.
I'm, you know, certainly happy to answer questions at this point.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I'll open it up for questions.
So, just, it's clarification. So, the significantly less money, the carryover, the $70,000, that's not coming on this budget we're gonna be passing or seeking to pass this coming March? It's the following year?
No, it will be, it will be March.
It is for this one, for FY '20.
Yeah, '18 affects two years, so that would be '20. And we build '20 now.
Okay. So, so
This is the carryforward that will
Right. And relative to past carryforward, we've been carrying between $600 and $1 million over the last several years, haven't we?
Yeah, so
And so, this is like
This is a big hit.
Right. So, right there, we're talking possibly at, what, one and a half cents?
Yeah.
Impact.
Impact.
Impact that we need to
Write off, yes.
Right. So, what happened last year is catching up with us?
Right.
As far as the clawback and such.
Yes, and we know we still have another piece of the clawback that will affect us, but it's a much smaller And that'll happen this year, but it won't affect until the '21 budget, you know, as far as carryforward goes.
Right. It looks to be initially about 53% of what the clawback was in 2018.
So, I've always known, going into budget year, we've always, ooh, you have this chunk of money that gets to start, and this year, no.
Yeah, this year is not the picture we are used to seeing.
No.
I, I have a question, as you know, because I emailed a question before. I'm just a little bit confused about the years, I'm, on the exact same Detail Policy, Policy 8. So, my question was, I was just confused about the wording of it. So, my understanding is that the general fund balance, after FY '18 worked itself all out, was $623,971. But then I'm confused about why we're taking the FY '18 amount out, the 553, 435, because I would have assumed that that was already sort of included, you know, up at the top, and, you know, revenues and expenses kind of worked out, and we came down to the fund balance. So, I'm confused as to why it would be the FY '18 amount that would be coming out as opposed to the FY '19, because we designated a certain amount for FY '19. It was very close, the numbers were very, very close. It was 555, 345, according to the budget book that we designated for '19. So, in my mind, that math would work out that that would then leave us with a certain amount left to designate for FY '20. Why is it the '18 amount? I'm confused about that.
Well, it's not the, not the same number. The number that, the 553 came from 2016.
Right, but my understanding was that that FY '16, that was the amount at the end of FY '16 that was there. And that carryforward was then a revenue source in FY '18.
Right.
So, that was one of the revenue sources. And then we had all of our other revenues and expenses. And then at the end, the total fund balance would have been 623,971. And my understanding from talking to John in previous years was that that whole amount had to show up as a revenue source in FY '20. I can see the logic of why we've already designated a portion for FY '19. That also makes logical sense to me, why we would take out FY '19's budgeted revenue amount. So, we had already taken a portion, basically, this 555, 345, and put that in FY '19 budget. So, if we know the actual fund balance was 623, we had to take out the FY '19 amount, and then 70-something comes into the FY '20 budget, I could get that. I'm confused about why we would work through the whole FY '18 budget to come to a fund balance and then take out again the amount that we had budgeted for the FY '18 budget. That's where I got confused. Because that 553, 435 number is the FY '18 amount. That's where I'm confused about, I, I feel like I misunderstood something in previous years, maybe. Because my understanding was that we basically looked at what the fund balance was at the end of FY '16, and that had to be carried right into FY '18. And likewise, the end of FY '18 had to be carried right into FY '20 by state law, that, that they wanted to make sure no one was sitting on any funds.
Right.
And that if we ended up in a situation where, so, for example, we designated this whole 623 into FY '20, there's not actually money there. There was somewhere else that that had to be, you know, made up. That's where, I just, I'm just confused about why we're sort of, it feels almost like we're, we're using an FY '18 number where we should be using an FY '19 designation. That's where I'm confused.
Well, because you have to designate when you build your budget, that, that is, from the '16 carryforward goes into your '18 budget. So, you have to consistently follow those numbers. And it's not new revenue, it's unexpended revenues from that two-year prior. So, when you have your audit, they tell you, they give you an idea when you, when they leave their audit before giving you the actual printed version, what they've come up with numbers. It may change a little bit, but they tell you right in there what you are allowed to designate into your '18 budget from your '16 revenue and expense fund balance.
Right.
So, that number has already come in as revenue. You've been hanging on to that revenue. So, you can't count it twice. And so, that's why you have, I know what you're saying is confusing, but that's sort of, it's the year that you designate it, is the year you take it back. You don't add it twice to your fund balance, so.
That's the key. I, I think the, the key is that it's the undesigned fund balance is the $70,000. Because we designated for the '18 budget, the 553.
I guess I'm just confused because the general fund balance at the end of FY '18, though, I would have thought that that took into account in the revenues of FY '18.
Right, it doesn't.
It doesn't.
No, it does not.
That's where I'm lost.
So, that's why I keep saying the word "new revenue", because that's the key word, is your undesign, or your, your designated carryover is not new revenue. That's revenue you've prior, you know, you've received over that prior fiscal year. So, when you're doing your actual books, you're looking at the true revenue you've received during that calendar year, not the, not what you designated to carry into that year, but the true revenue, the new revenue. So, you use that new revenue and your expenses that took place in that fiscal year, and that gives you a balance. And that's where you see the number, the negative 441, 857. That's taking your real new revenue, less your actual expenses. That's giving, so we over-expended on our, our actual money that came in the door during the fiscal year '18. So, then, that taking the prior, you're taking the beginning fund balance, which is the audited number that you get from your prior fiscal year end. You get an opening fund balance. So, you take that number and you subtract your new revenues, or you add your new revenues, you subtract your expenses to get your ending balance for the year in, at 623 that you see. But remembering that the revenue, you can't count that, you are, you have to subtract out what you had already designated to use of that fund balance. So, we, we had a fund balance of $1,065, but we designated 553, 435 to use for this, for the '18 fiscal year.
That's, this is where I'm confused, though, too, because this says, this is the opening fund balance
Yes, so that comes
At 7.1 of '18. Was that?
Yep.
But that would be at the beginning of the fiscal year '19. Right? Because 7.1 of '18 is
Oh, you're right. No, that was a misprint on date, you're right.
Okay, I'm confused with that.
I'm sorry, yes, that is a misprint, so you're right. That should have said 17.
I'm confused about that, okay. So, that's where we were.
Mm-hmm. And that, that comes from the audit itself.
Right.
I'm trying to think of any other easy way to explain that.
Yeah, I guess I'm just still confused, because, so we started with a million. We lost $441,000.
Correct.
I would have said, then, our, our ending balance is 623.
Right. But that, in that $1,065 that you get from your auditors, it includes the 553, 435 that you designated and committed already. So, you have to subtract that by, otherwise you would be counting it twice. I have the audit here. I don't know if it might help to just see the numbers after. I'm happy to share that.
Okay.
But you're right, that number, 7.18 is a confusion.
I'm thinking of it as a cash account that's like sitting there someplace, and then this is what our cash flow is for the year, and so this is what the cash is at the end of the year. And that's where I'm getting confused, I think. So, yeah.
Yeah, it is, it is a different world of thinking. I know, and it, you know, I, I'm comfortable with what I'm telling you, but it's like, how do you explain that in a term that
Yeah.
makes sense? But it, your, your fund balance is given to you at the, the start of your year, having known that you designated part of that already, you know, because you can't spend it all, or you'd be deficit spending.
Right.
Because there's other issues that are involved in your fund balance. So, they allow you to designate that from one year to the next. The auditors actually have it listed as what you can, what is available to commit to your next budget round. So, that's how we get our number. It's not, you see it here, and you see there's a number that's listed that's called "unspendable", there's a number listed that's called "committed", and there's a listing of "unassigned fund balance". And that's the number we're given because you can't spend everything, or you would be in deficit.
Okay. I'm str, I'm just struggling to unlearn something I thought I had learned last year.
And I'm sorry that I No, no, but probably because he explains it one way, and I'm explaining it another, I can understand that would be confusing.
Okay.
There is the law that speaks specifically '16.
Yes, that's listed in here.
567. Specifically to that, although I don't necessarily think the language is easy to follow there either.
And it does, the wording in the law does reflect the undesigned fund balance, and that's what we talk about. You know, that unassigned fund balance is given to us.
Okay.
And a number by the auditors.
Okay.
It's just the way it crosses No, please, I'd rather you understand, and it helps you all.
I just wanted to go back one. I am back on the old report, the one that you did mark up, so the one from March. I just wanted to make sure. So, on page two of the old report, the one that Elizabeth signed, on that table as well, is that line two, it says, "Plus fund balance used to offset FY '18 expenditures", because that's a different number than the one that's in the budget book for FY '18. Or is that meant to be?
That's a really good catch, no.
Is that to be 17?
No.
No, it's not.
You're talking about the 516 number?
No, I'm talking about the 1341283, because this says it's about the June 2017 year, so the FY '17 year.
Right. So, I'm confused about why we'd be using a fund balance that was meant to offset FY '18 in the budget for, because this is supposed to be budget-to-actual for 2017. I'm just trying to make sure that I'm understanding. Because when he was talking about the, oh, no, he was talking about the 16, 17 audit. You know, I'm not sure I understand that either.
We went round and round about this table last time, and I didn't focus so much on the date as I was focusing on these bottom numbers and why they weren't matching what was in the budget book, because I was, I was very confused about that.
Right.
But I just wanted to make sure that I was understanding how these things flowed through.
Yeah, I would not have done this chart that way, because it does absolutely confuse me even.
That makes me feel a little better.
Yeah.
Because this 1341283
Yes, I see it here.
Does tie into the budget book now for what was 17. And that's why I just feel like maybe this, just, maybe just the line is, is mislabeled.
Probably, because when we do these reports or in that next fiscal year, maybe he also did that. But, no, that wouldn't be true, because I'm looking at the audit, and the audit says that in FY '16, our committed fund balance was 1 point, was $1,341,283, which is that number.
Plus the undesigned fund balance carryforward amount.
So, yeah, that would be what we committed in '18, but why is it in the 17 report? I am confused about that as well.
Because it ended in 17, right? And it's, isn't it to offset?
Right. I think he's, I think he's got the dates wrong.
Because then it says "fund balance reserved to offset '18 expenses", again.
Yeah.
And that's not the same number. So, I think that should have said 17.
FY '17, okay. It makes a lot more sense to me. Like, I was starting to try to understand it all, and looking at the old year, was trying to, I was trying to help myself by looking at the old year.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yes.
This report should have said 17.
Seventeen there, because down, I just realized down as I'm reading further, FY eighteen is listed at the bottom, at the, at the number I see here that we were supposed to be. Yeah.
It's fine, we can.
I can try to give a little bit more clarity in how that might be better written to understand. I can even consult our auditors to see if they could help explain that, if that would be helpful to you.
It would be helpful, only, only because this is the kind of thing that, that we do get weirdly, as board members, we get asked about it at time, and people look back at it, and I feel a lot more comfortable if I can explain it, if I know it well enough to be able to explain it. Not that I necessarily would, sometimes I do hand them back off to you, but it, if I don't understand it well enough to explain it, then I'm understanding well enough to, to understand the budget, really.
Okay, yeah, absolutely. She'll have, she'll be the expert when it's all said and done.
Yes, Elizabeth.
Hi, it's Elizabeth. I, I, I know we've got this on our agenda next, but, and it gets not specifically relevant to discussion of two point four. I've appreciated the discussion, thanks, Amity and Gary on that, but we might want to think about doing maybe a three to four-year reconciliation with the improved language, explaining that designated fund balance and carryover process, so that if we're, if we're having this conversation at the board level, I'm sure the community is going to, you know, want some clarification on that, too.
Great.
We can talk about it on agenda twelve.
Just showing it more historically over, over a period of time.
I, I think that's a good idea. I mean, and this, you know, some of the confusion I, I think surrounds just the term undesignated fund balance, it was called surplus up until you approved the change last year.
Yeah.
So, so even the terminology was not really appropriate in the past.
Yeah. Okay, did you have anything else you wanted to say on, on two point four?
I was just letting the floor ask questions, so.
Anyone else have questions? Alex, do you have questions? Martin, any more questions? Elizabeth, did you have any more questions on two point four?
No, I think I, I think I tracked along, it's a little hard to hear Amity, but I think I've got it, thank you.
Okay. Great, well, good job, thank you.
Do we have to action, or are we going to, we have changes that are on the back?
Um.
I think you have a few things you want to maybe clarify. It's up to you. On how you want to go through, if you want to go through the report right now, it's up to you. I mean, I think, it's up to you.
Was there some, are there going to be any changes given our discussion?
My view is there won't be material changes to any of the reportable items. We, we can provide you a better explanation to make the undesignated fund balance more clear, but I don't believe there'll be any, any material changes to any numbers.
So why don't we?
Then why don't we go ahead and take action on it? So that we don't have to bring you all back. Okay. So, so this is two point four, financial condition and activities. And do we, the only question I have is, do we have to do roll call on every single one of these?
I think we're not, we're just, we're not actually having a motion and such, so no.
Okay.
I think we're just essentially by consensus.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay. So with respect to the actual ongoing financial condition and activities, the superintendent shall not cause or allow the development of financial jeopardy or material deviation of actual expenditures from board priorities established in N's policies. Reasonable interpretation?
Yes.
Adequate data?
Yep.
Yes. In compliance?
Yes.
Okay. Further, without limiting the scope of the foregoing by this enumeration, the superintendent shall not, detail policy number one, expend more funds than have been received or budgeted in the fiscal year to date. Reasonable interpretation?
Yes.
Adequate data?
Yep.
In compliance?
Yes.
Number two, incurred debt in an amount greater than can be repaid by certain otherwise unencumbered revenues within ninety days. Reasonable interpretation?
Yes.
Adequate data?
Yes.
In compliance?
Yes.
Bridgette, are you, are you hearing Elizabeth on the phone, or does she need, not need to chime in?
I think you're okay, if she just agrees, she can speak up.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I just thought she might bend her mind.
And there's a quorum of us sitting here, too, so, yeah. Number three, use any long-term reserves. Reasonable interpretation?
Yes.
Adequate data?
Yes.
In compliance?
Yes.
Number four, conduct inter-fund shifting in amounts greater than can be restored to a condition of discrete fund balances by certain otherwise unencumbered revenues within thirty days. Reasonable interpretation?
Yes.
Adequate data?
Yes.
Yes. In compliance?
Yes.
Number five, fail to settle payroll and debts in a timely manner. Reasonable interpretation?
Yes.
Adequate data?
Yes.
In compliance?
Yes.
Number six, allow tax payments or other government ordered payments or filings to be overdue or inaccurately filed. Reasonable interpretation?
Yes.
Adequate data?
Yes.
In compliance?
Yes.
Number seven, make a single unbudgeted purchase or commitment of greater than twenty-five thousand, or the addition of a point five FTE teacher. Splitting orders to avoid this limit is not acceptable. Reasonable interpretation?
Yes.
Adequate data?
Yes.
In compliance?
Yes.
Number eight, spend the prior year's undesignated fund balance. A reasonable interpretation?
Yes.
Adequate data?
Yes.
In compliance?
Yes.
Number nine, fail to aggressively pursue receivables after a reasonable grace period. Reasonable interpretation?
Yes.
Adequate data?
Yes.
In compliance?
Yes.
Number ten, accept non-resident tuition students unless tuition is being paid by other Vermont school districts or the state. Reasonable interpretation?
Yes.
Adequate data?
Yes.
In compliance?
Yes.
I guess I should have gone through the details first, and then gone back up to the first one, but I think we.
I think it's possible.
We have taken care of it. Okay. Great. Thank you, Amity and Gary. Thank you for being patient with me. So it brings us to number twelve, budget book redesign, which I think is going to be a very short discussion.
Yeah, so I know Bridgette actually, I think, has solicited feedback from some board members, but also met with Gary and Amity, just giving some ideas around, maybe some ideas for, for budget book changes, re, kind of reworking it. So we've, we've been in receipt of those, and we're in the process, Central Office folks is putting that, putting that together, and we'll be bringing that back to the board for, for a review. There are, I think, important to note, with the change of chart of accounts in the state of Vermont, we're going to be, it's going to be a tricky, tricky business, because although we can, large, large group show the, the, the previous year to the budgeted year, but as we get into the details as we have in the past, if we continue to do that, it's not going to be as easy, because the chart of account is changing. So you wouldn't be able to see, you know, the granular side of like six ten supplies, because it's going to have a different number. So just wanted to give you a little bit of insight, we're going to look at how we can still maybe roll it up to the higher level, so you can see the, you know, the, the percent change from the previous year, but there is going to be some details in there that are going to be harder for us to be able to do that. We don't yet have a chart of accounts, we don't yet have a program in place from the state. We know that that's going to be, this is going to be a difficult budget year to, to do that. So we're likely going to be building the budget on an Excel kind of spreadsheet format, with the hopes that when the Power School comes into play, then we'll be able to transfer that data into the system as easy as possible. So our hope will be that the following year, a year from now, we'll be in a much different place. That's, that's our hope, but right now, we're kind of in this, going to live in a couple different worlds around doing that. But again, we think the chart, the, the budget book ideas have been positive, but we'll bring, the recommendation is to bring back a little bit more of a narrative from some of the individual schools, and a little bit more of a reflection, so.
And a little bit of, yeah, and a little bit of a narrative from some of the high-level administrators, like the Director of Learning, about, you know, where we're going, so that, so that taxpayers can see a little bit more clearly what their money is paying for, yeah. And also to take out a little bit of some of the analyses that have reflected very detailed, specific questions from specific individuals in the past, and we're not saying we'll do away with those entirely, but maybe those are better served on the website for people who want to dig deeper versus an overall summary. So the city charter has a few things that have to be in the budget book, and I think we sort of talked about moving back to those things, and then maybe one sort of high-level summary, and then a little bit more narrative to sort of explain what's going on, so. So David was going to do sort of a mock-up, or Gary and Amity and David were going to put together a mock-up of what the book would look like without the actual numbers in it, and then that will provide a little bit more robust discussion at maybe next board meeting, or the one after that, depending on.
Yeah, probably will be.
How full the schedule gets, and how little time you have between this and the next board meeting, since that's a week away, yes. Yes. Okay.
Yep, great.
So that brings us to twelve A, which is just a very quick note about the other paper article. So the other paper article that is due tomorrow, I believe, I don't know if we're still getting any of our leeway, now that there is new management at the other paper, but I believe we owe them an article for our board column tomorrow, and Martin had distributed it to the board to have a look.
Oh, thank you.
Looking for any feedback. I've got copies.
You already probably have one.
Oh, yeah, I was looking online. Go get a copy. Good, thanks. So I just want to make sure the, the board is on board for this, because, and the communication on this column is that we, it's about collaboration between the city and the school, and the school district, and the city council and such. And its importance, and it, and it talks about how the school's primary function is certainly to have an exemplary public education, but we'd like to cooperate with, with our, with, with the city council. And that, this recently happened with respect to the municipal building. I do go on and explain that we have various infrastructure needs, and, and we need to coordinate the amount of money, or the, that we're going to potentially need to get from the community, that we need to coordinate with the city on that as well. And my concern was whether this somehow came across as, as being negative towards our decision with respect to the municipal offices and such, and I don't want it to, and, but that was, I just wanted to make sure that I flagged that for everybody on the board, so you could weigh in on whether, I mean, maybe I'm being just too sensitive about this with respect to the, the upcoming vote with respect to the library, you know, which, which we definitely are laying out the benefits to the school district of that. So that's kind of why I've actually wanted to put it on the agenda as well. Did we lose Elizabeth, or?
I'm just calling her on my cell phone, because David's is nearly out of battery, so.
So was Elizabeth there, or, or did she?
Elizabeth, are you there on my phone?
Still on mine, I think, but soon to run out.
Elizabeth, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Okay, she's on mine.
So did you hear my, my, what I said, Elizabeth?
Yes, I did, thanks, Martin.
Yeah, do you have any issue with what I, I have written? Are we fine? Am I being overly sensitive as far as not wanting to?
Um, no, I, I just wondered, I didn't know what the city charter calls for, for the meeting, the steering committee meetings. I don't, I didn't know if it was a year or not, but maybe we should reference the city charter requirement there.
Okay.
And I didn't, I didn't have any concerns with the balance of it, it's pretty straightforward and consistent with our public discussion.
Okay, all right. So you just, I need to double check that it's four times per year?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure that's what it says, but yeah, it's probably worth a double check. I know, I thought it struck a balance between, I mean, we do need to make people aware, we've been talking about it already, and, you know, Doran Whittaker came and presented last spring. People know that we are in the master planning and visioning process, and we need to keep making sure the community is aware that there will be capital needs at some point with regard to the schools. But I do think this strikes a balance with, you know, keeping people informed, but being supportive of, of the project. So I thought, I was okay with it. Alex, did you have any thoughts, having skimmed it quickly?
Yeah, skimming, I skimmed it quickly, and there's nothing material that I disagree with. I would try to break up that third paragraph, if you could, it's pretty long. Okay.
All right. Any other feedback for Martin?
All right.
Okay.
I'll get it in.
Great. So that brings us to number thirteen, set the agenda for the October third, two thousand eighteen meeting. So we have a draft agenda in front of us.
I think it might be good to add in a negotiation update, we, we had done this, started last, but maybe given there's some things that you may want to just update the public on status, like you did most of last year, would be a recommendation.
Yep, I would agree with that. I think we should make clear on master planning and visioning that Doran Whittaker will be here. That's really important for the community to know, because it's sort of the first chance to really hear their update on where we are on stage two.
Yeah, so we can reorder that a little bit, yeah.
I noted that we probably need to bring, just since Steve is not here, I would feel a little better if we brought back the VSBA resolutions one last time, before we all head off with those, just to make sure we're on the same page.
Sounds good.
And then I had other paper articles, we probably just, now that Martin will have this one, and we just need to make sure we're clear on the next few, and who's responsible for getting the next one started.
Okay. So the SBA resolution, other paper article, negotiation update, reword Doran Whittaker report, heard that.
Just make that, let me make that clear.
And David? I, I have a request. I had been hoping that we could get something showing the details of the possible land swap, and, and what we gain in terms of classroom space at the middle and high schools when administration moves across the street, or if administration moves across the street. Can we get some details of that? For instance, how many classrooms would be freed up? How many classrooms are used by administration right now? I'm also considering, talking about the, what would, might be a worst-case scenario, or whatever, some people would call it a worst-case scenario, what would happen if we had to move the fifth grade from the elementary schools, close Chamberlain, and move all those kids to Orchard and, and Markot? Would there be room to do that, without having to start new construction?
We, we, we looked at that, and we could not do that. So that was not a possible resolution, that was not a possible resolution.
So, okay, so I think it's good to flush out that, that worst-case scenario could not be mitigated by this land swap that the community is voting on. But, but the other details, such as how many classrooms are going to be, would be freed up by it in the middle and high school, would be very useful.
So would that be something, Alex, you're, you're wanting to hear more about at the October third meeting, or we're talking about that at the present time, or board members?
I think it's got to get out there before the vote goes.
I don't agree that that's necessarily the case, because what, what this, what the land swap is giving us is, is more flexibility, and it's, it's happening at the same time that we have Doran Whittaker actually evaluating this building and the high school, and the Niasc as well, all those things are kind of going together, and, and I think the, the contingency planning that we're doing separately for Chamberlain, the planning that we're doing for the middle school and high school, I think that whether we get six seventy-five is one component of that, but I, I think that, that this is something that needs to be definitively answered when we're in the process of figuring out exactly how we're going to use these two buildings. I don't think the information will be really sufficient before a vote in November to really have that be a factor in that vote. Because we're going to be discussing how these two buildings are going to be significantly changing, so coming, I don't know that we're, I don't know that I'd want to ask the administration to use their time to figure out something based on what we're doing right now, when we're trying to figure out what we're going to be doing in the next thirty years, you know, starting very, very soon. So I, I just, I don't, unless that's just something really easy to figure out, but.
I mean, I think on an, I mean, we, we have the square footage, we have kind of the number of classrooms, so I think I'm certainly happy to provide, you know, that to you, Alex. I worry about confusing a little bit of, as Martin said, our work right now with master planning, the city's desire for space and land, and then, because those, those aren't necessarily equal. I mean, if five seventy-five comes to us, I mean, that wasn't necessarily something we sized appropriately. I mean, if 575 comes to us, I mean, that wasn't necessarily something we sized appropriately. I mean, it's in the, you know, that whole building is available, but it's not a direct correlation to the number of offices that we have to the, it's not perfect. So I worry that that will be misleading a little bit to people around the process that's currently going forward for November. I think Martin's exactly right around, it's part of the equation for us, you know, as we move forward around the space, you know, needs on a going-forward basis. But again, I mean, if it's something that the whole board wants, you know, certainly can provide that.
Yeah, I'm just a little bit worried that the public discussion would then be, you know, would get very into this granular, you know, is it fair? That wasn't really the, I don't think the whole idea of the land swap, as Martin said, was really to give us flexibility and space to do the planning that we're doing. And I really hope that when voters go to vote on the new municipal building, that they are looking at the cost of it and what they're getting in terms of a new building and they're really voting on that more so than voting on whether the school district is going to have, you know, X number of new classrooms. I can see why that's, that might be appealing, but I would really like to keep the focus of that vote on the building and what the city's asking for that building.
Hi, Bridgette, it's Elizabeth. I would agree with yours and Martin's comments about it being premature to commit to kind of what space would be freed up at our existing facilities and any level of detail that is above and beyond what was in, you know, the definitive agreement around providing the option and the flexibility to utilize. And the benefits being, as we've described them, for the school district, kind of short-term and then longer-term. But until there's thorough due diligence done through the entire master planning process as well as, you know, the, an affirmative vote in City Hall moving, it's really a moot conversation.
Okay.
Okay. So any other additions off the top of our heads before we flip the page and look at future agenda items and all that? Any other things that come to mind for people that need to be on the October 3 agenda? Under the administrative reports is Pat, who's coming to deliver that?
Patrick Burke and Michael Martin.
Pat and Michael, okay, great. Oh, and we can take off financial condition and activities because we went ahead and worked through that tonight? On under 11, 2.4 Financial Condition and Activities was one of the two monitoring reports. And we can take that off. So then, future agenda items, are there any that we need to move up to the October 3 agenda? It's looking like a pretty full agenda considering that it was already set for 955 adjournments and we've added a few things that might take some time. But does anyone have any burning need to move up more of these future agenda items? Is there anything we want to add to future agenda items that anyone has in mind?
Take off the student freedom of expression and school-sponsored media.
That's true, that's true. Okay. And then I have a quick question about number 14. Consider the minutes of the meetings of September 24, September 26, and October 2. That would be Tuesday of next week. What is on Tuesday of?
Tuesday is the, no, you've got...
Wouldn't it be the first for the, our regular negotiations planning meeting? Is that the one we're talking about?
Probably right.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I wasn't missing something on Tuesday that I was supposed to be attending.
30, yeah.
Okay, and then the 30th, because the 30th, well, add September 30 because that's the...
We don't know, we think it's just going to be, at this point, it's just two, Martin and you, Bridgette, right? But we don't necessarily know about Steve, whether he'll participate. So typically warning, you know, that 30th meeting was what the point was.
Yep. Okay, so I think that is the agenda for October 3. And we already talked a little bit about future agenda items in the context of the October 3 meeting. Crossed off that last bullet point. Did anyone have anything on the minutes of, or number 15, did anyone have anything on the minutes of September 5, September 10, and September 17? I had a small, a small one on September 5, on the second page, where we talk about Attorney Rue and the things that he noted. I just wanted to be careful about this list of benefits and things that we talked about for people who might be reading minutes and only see this and not see the actual agreement or not see other discussions we've had. One of the big concerns about the land exchange is parking for the new library, City Hall, and senior center. We've typically said limited parking to support a new City Hall. I just don't want people who are reading this cold and not having been in the discussion to think that it's going to be all the parking for City Hall and the new library. And then that last bullet point, I would add limited, I would like to add limited before that parking. And I had gone back to see what David actually said in the meeting. Typically, he talks about limited parking though when we do talk about the benefits. And then the last bullet point is possible future access to Mary Street because that's not necessarily something that is, has been negotiated with all the property owners that would need to be negotiated with to provide that access. So that's really a possibility as opposed to an exact benefit for the land exchange. So those are my two small things that I would hope to add to that one. And then I didn't have anything else on the other meetings. Does anyone else have any comments on any of the meeting minutes? Nope, okay. Onto 16, Accounts Payable Orders 9, 10, and 11. Were there any questions or concerns about those? Seeing none, we'll move on to Agenda Item 17, Accounts Payable Order Check to Howard Center for Human Services in the amount of $142,149.39. Are there any questions about that? If not, do I have a motion to approve the Accounts Payable Order Check to Howard Center in the amount listed?
So moved. I'll second.
And then I'll take a roll call vote since Elizabeth is on the phone. So Elizabeth?
Aye.
Martin?
Yep.
Alex?
Aye.
And the motion passes. And do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll second it.
Roll call vote, Elizabeth?
Aye.
Martin?
Yo.
Alex?
Aye.
And we are adjourned.